All right, good job. Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I'd like to thank Mayor and the City Council for allowing us to be here. And I'd like to thank this board for agreeing to do things like this for our constituents around the county, that we take our time sometimes to talk to you and invite you to talk to us outside of the Board of Commissioners' office and meeting room, and we actually come to you. So some people that normally don't have the opportunity to be at our day meetings can join us in the evening. I hope this will continue to grow. Commissioner Boyce, do you have a report for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair. First, thanks for sharing the vision to move around the county, be available, accessible. We're hoping for turnouts in both Port Norfolk and Brookings, and that way we can justify the logistical cost that it takes. But we do want to be accessible, and that's something we're very committed to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Line of duty deaths, military first within the country, we're right at 20 now. That's four up from the middle of July, and of course, most of those are in the Afghanistan war. And our hearts certainly go out to those people and their families. Firefighters were at 33, again, that's line of duty deaths. And so that's a surprising number. That's also, Mr. Chair, four up from the middle of last month. Police officers were at 83 throughout the United States. And that is a staggering number, but it's still percentage-wise quite a bit less than what we had for at this point after the end of eight months compared to 2018. So a moment of silence if we could, much appreciated.
Thank you. All right, so do we have any amendments to the agenda? Commissioner Boyce?
Thanks again, Mr. Chair. Consent agenda, I think we need to pull A, B, and C. We have to do developments. I just asked the board to consider tabling that maybe until next meeting.
A, B, and C?
A, B, and C, or four of them. B and C, I'm sorry.
A, B, and C.
The four look like A.
Okay, so Chairman's glasses. You're asking to pull the order to revise existing job description for planning director and pay decrees for planning director?
Yes, you need to delay or dis table this.
Okay.
And I have one other.
Go ahead.
I just want to open for discussion, Mr. Chair, for F on the environmental health services licensing. I don't think that'll take very long.
Okay. Mr. Gold?
For F?
Yes. No, for E, excuse me.
Oh, okay.
Got to ban the thousand.
So you just want that for discussion?
That's correct.
Okay, so where are we going to put that?
Five D. Five, you want it for five D? Do you want it removed from the consent agenda, or would you rather just discuss it when we announce the consent agenda and then possibly include it in the...
That would be fine, I'll leave it up to you.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we just discuss it when we go for the consent agenda, and then we can either approve it or deny it at that point?
That's fine.
Okay, do you have any changes?
No. So I'm going to improve the consent agenda as a member, or I mean, the whole agenda?
Second, Mr. Chair. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold. I, Commissioner Boyce.
Yes.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye. All right, so moving on to public comments. As you may or may not know, we normally try to limit public comments to about three minutes. If you have any exhibits, which I think you've given us, we will pull them up and read through them as well as you present. If you would just come up to the microphone, let's start with Sharon Harrell. Come on up.
I'm not 100% sure who this falls under or whatever, but it's something that everybody keeps saying we should bring up. So the horrendous smell that's coming from the port. And we, it's been bothering us now for a couple of years, and it's gotten twice now. I've gotten up in the middle of the night and raced to the bathroom to vomit because of the smell. It's just so thick, you can't breathe around our house and stuff at night. And it's getting, it started laying off and getting a little bit better, and then it's been picking up again, really getting bad, all through the town. And a couple of weeks ago, well, it wasn't even that, on Thursday, the 15th, we had a sheriff's deputy knocking on our door, and he said he was responding to the complaint of a dead body smell. So they were searching the neighborhood, the bushes and everything, and asking if we'd seen a dead body. And I kind of halfway laughed, and I said, "I'm really sorry, whoever called you about this, but I think the smell is coming from the port." And we talked about it a brief time, and he said that I should call the DEQ. And it was just a couple hours before that that I had been down at the sanitary district office and asking, you know, what to do about it. And she gave me a phone number and a man to call from the DEQ. So I thought, two times in one day, one, the police are looking for a dead body. We know it's really getting bad. And then I spoke with, I called Tim McFetrich in Salem and talked to him, and he said he had been down here at the end of July for a similar call, and he wanted to check and see what was going on. And I also, then I got a follow-up call from a lady named Jenny, also in Salem. And I filed, she told me where to go online, and I filed a complaint online. And a couple of days later, I get a call from a man named Martin Apps in Coos Bay. And he said he had also heard about this, but they just assumed it was a one-time deal, you know, a perfect storm, you know, nothing to worry about, and that was the end of it. Well, I called him back, and I said, "It's not a one-time thing. This is a daily thing, and it's getting worse and worse." So they said they had heard something about this, too. So we talked for about 45 minutes. And he said then, he said, "Okay, I'm going to drive down from Coos Bay to Brookings tomorrow," which was a couple of days ago, "and I haven't heard back from him yet because it's getting well-known. It's not just our neighborhood, it's the whole town." We're sitting in a restaurant downtown, and some travelers came through, some tourists, and they said, "What is that smell?" And nobody could eat because it was just so heavy. So we're just trying to figure out who it is, why it is, and what can be done about it. If anybody's really going to look into it and do anything, or if they're just going to poo-poo it and say it's no big deal.
You personally believe it's coming from the port?
Yes, we believe it's coming from B.C. Fisheries. They say they do shrimp and crab there, cleaning and all. We have heard, I probably shouldn't say another commissioner, that he personally knew that they were taking the dead, all those scrapings and everything from the shrimp and all, putting it into a trailer or a box or something outside, and it would sit there, and they're treating it with something called putrescine that breaks it down, and then it sits there for who knows how long, and then they send another truck over to pick all this stuff up, and then they hose out the truck from all this garbage, and it goes onto the ground. It's been seen out in the ocean, floating along Sporthaven Beach.
Have you brought this to the port board?
No, I don't, I didn't know where to go. This just all came up in the last couple of days, so...
Well, let me do this. I will contact the port manager tomorrow, Gary, and speak with him about it, and then also you may want to contact them as well as a follow-up, and I...
Yeah, I listed all the names of the people I've talked to and their phone numbers in here, so...
Yeah, I also see Martin Apps' number here. I'll give him a call myself tomorrow as well.
Yeah, and so he's been down here to see about it, and also McFetrich has been here.
Okay.
So we're trying, if there's anything else we can do.
If you learn what it is, let us know, but...
It's a dead body, and I don't want the police coming to my house anymore.
We're going to go, you want to inform me?
Yeah, I was going to do that. I think somebody told me the other day that they, excuse me, that they have meetings. I got to find out when and...
Yeah, you can go on their website, Board of Brookings, Harvard, and they'll list their dates of their meetings and their times.
And I don't know why I'm doing this. It's just like, I don't know if I'm the bravest or what, but you know...
Thank you for... All right, thank you, sir.
And I have one more copy of this if anybody wants it. I ran out, so...
Can you open the file?
And this one is just larger print, so I could see it. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Barnes.
Good evening, I'm David Barnes. I am, last year, the previous body, previous board decided against entering into the opioid lawsuit that was going around. A few months ago, I brought it back to the board and asked you about it, and I've been reading in the paper the last couple of weeks where there's hundreds of millions and billions of dollars being offered to counties who join the opioid lawsuit, and I was wondering if we did get involved in that.
We haven't yet, but...
No, we did. We are.
But we are, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Had a meeting, we talked about a response to those...
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah. No, we have retained a lawyer in court called Tom DiMora, and his law firm is representing us, and we're involved in the, I'll call it the omnibus...
Class action.
Class action that's being handled in Ohio.
Okay.
So we're involved, we're in the thick of it. Don't know what the outcome's going to be. And then Julie Schmelzer sent me, I think yesterday, the day before, a link to the Oklahoma case where there was an award against one of the pharmaceutical companies. Yep, Johnson &amp; Johnson.
And actually, there's another one right now offering 10 to 12 billion to...
Yes, the Sackler family with Purdue is looking, that's a tie, basically. There were 120, they'll give away 10%, make it go away.
They're a real structure.
Yeah.
Sure. But, Mr. Barnes, I'm not sure, you are usually right on top of everything. I don't know how this wants to bite, but we have been involved in that. We just aren't giving reports on it. We're kind of in a holding pattern, but we're processing paperwork with the law firm who represents us.
Didn't slip by, I just wanted to ask.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
All right.
That's one way to get your money.
Yes. John said George has decided to buy it, and so they offered a half billion, I think, and that was unacceptable, and so that's where they, and they're already in the appeals process, so wouldn't put good money on that.
Okay. Next, we have Gordon Clay. Good evening, everybody.
Gordon Clay, Brookings, Oregon. September is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Suicide in the U.S., Oregon, and Curry County is at an all-time high. In 2017, in Oregon, the CDC's 50 leading causes of death showed that suicide was the leading cause of death in Oregon for 15 to 54, and that Curry County leads all 36 counties in per capita suicides. We also know that the whole Wild Rivers Coast has difficulty keeping qualified behavioral health practitioners. 20 months ago, I was recommended to establish a Curry County Suicide Prevention Council like Lain, Jackson, Josephine, Washington, and other counties have done. Silence. The fact that some of our citizens won't wait, including 10% of our youth who attempt suicide every year. So what to do, citizens? Sit around for another 20 months and hope someone's going to take action on this? 90% of people who kill themselves have demonstrated known warning signs, but no one ever picked up on them. What each person needs to do is to be responsible and learn the risk factors and warning signs and what to do when they are around a friend, neighbor, colleague, or family member who's exhibiting one of those signs. Make yourself available to listen by asking with confidence, "Are you okay?", and let them know that it's okay to say, "I'm not okay." Other things we can do is help connect someone who is struggling with, to get professional services. Check in with a friend by phone or text message to see how they are doing, especially divorcing men. Invite a friend to meet for coffee or to share a meal together. Send a handwritten card to let somebody know that you are thinking of them. Pick up some of these cards that are 163 locations in Curry and Delnor County, and carry them with you, and give one to anybody that you think is changing their pattern. Take a one-hour-long QPR course online. Share the National Suicide Lifeline number and the Crisis Text Line number, 741-741, especially with youth and millennials. There's a myth that if you ask someone if they're thinking about suicide or thinking about killing themselves, that it would increase the likelihood of that happening. Just the reverse happens. It brings relief, opens up discussions, reduces isolation, and shows that someone cares. Together, we can change the conversation by countering the myths and fear with information and action steps everyone can take. We all have a role to play in suicide prevention. Finally, on September 7th, in the Pilot and seven other newspapers in the two, in three counties, is this 16-page, four-color magazine called Finding Hope. It has all the information I've been talking about, and be sure and get your copy, read it. Commit to breaking the silence by talking about your lived experience with suicide, and let's work together as a village to save lives. Be that person that matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clay, would you stay the reason? Mr. Chair, can we have a little session on this now, or at some point can we hopefully get a consensus and follow through with his recommendation, County Suicide Prevention Council, I think is what you said.
What I would offer is, I think I missed sending you all a proclamation for this month. I didn't see it on the agenda, and it's telling me that I didn't send it. I've got everybody else.
Oh, you send it to us, and we'll put it on the agenda next week.
That was my point. I'll send it to you, and I'll make a point to be at the next meeting.
And a lot of people here may or may not know, one veteran in our, basically, in this nation commits suicide, and one out of every four of those is active duty. Think about that, people that are actually active duty are committing suicide. We need to do more.
Well, and five of the vets, five of the 14 people that killed themselves the last year were vets in Curry County.
Gordon, it's always great to hear you, just tremendous. Could you give a little more detail of what you would like specific for us to put on the next agenda so we have, so the public, too, has a clear understanding of what you're recommending and requesting?
I would really like that second page that I passed out. I would like us to see where we're getting, in my opinion, inadequate service from CCH. We're not, that's going to change January 1 because of state law. They're going to have to get extra therapists, certify extra therapists. But we need a commission that is not tied to any one organization that sits down, and my recommendation after the suicide symposium that I put on, is having those groups represented because that's what we can, how we can solve problems. And that's how most of these other counties, Jackson, Josephine, et cetera, were doing it, is getting the people together so we actually, on a monthly basis, talk about, "Here's what we do, and here's what we do." This is missing right now. The one thing that I believe is we're going to have a low rate in 2018, definitely lower than 14. But a big part of that is because people took action and did the crisis teams, and those supporting, you know, they go out in an organized manner and deal with somebody that's doing it instead of sending police officers that have not been trained in CIT to the scene, who bring out, you know, introduce themselves to a mentally charged person with a taser or a gun, which only triggers a response from bipolar people and manic people. I mean, that's the first reason, thing you can get them to pop on, and that causes an unfortunate situation. And the crisis team knows how to deal with crisis situations. And see other things, because there isn't anything else that I've seen, and I go to a lot of meetings here in Curry County, that's really active to shut down what, or to open up the connection with people, so we've got systems to bring in Elks and bring in the Rotary and bring in sophomores and the churches and all to really start talking about it.
All right, thank you.
Very understanding. I think the board does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, we're going to next move on to the consent agenda, and let's just go ahead and skip down to E for discussion, amend Environmental Health Services Contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a new Senate bill that was passed during the last session, and obviously, it's hitting all counties. You know, our food establishments, they have a tough go, and I hear from some of the owners and some of the managers at times about the fees that they're paying. I think we're bound by this, I don't think there's any question there, but it's basically six and a half percent raise, Senate Bill 28, and it just makes another notch in the expense of steam business. And we saw in our housing program today, the number of people that are in the tourism or service business, that portion, and it gets back to the wage and all the above, and so I'm just a little disappointed to see this. I'm not going to oppose it, but I am going to be on guard for, I wouldn't say defending our businesses, but I think we have to be very aware of the task that they have and the expenses, and if this is passed on to them, or it's not really clear exactly where the money comes from, but it is a raise, a higher fee, and only that goes back to the consumer and our tourism visitor promotion and our businesses that cater to those travelers. So that's all I really wanted to offer there, and we need to be aware of what those costs are.
Commissioner Gold?
You say six and a half percent raise, a raise on what, the business license fees of the restaurants, or what is it, six and a half percent?
They're trying to basically raise another million dollars throughout the state, so that it went from resolving remittance factor of 17 and a half percent, excuse me, 10.9%. So basically, 11 to 17.4. So it's another raise in fees that have to be passed on to the taxpayers or the businesses, the workers, certainly the customers. So I'm just disappointed to see this.
So are the fees coming from the state, or I'm still unclear?
Well, they, here, tourist facility program, 15% of the state licenses, you just read the first paragraph, Commissioner Gold. County licenses, whichever is less collected by county that quarter in accordance. So full facility program amount of 45 for each license issued by the local LPA, Local Public Healthing Authority, which is us. So it's, it's just a big jump in one year, in my view.
Basically, it's a fee that we collect, and then we have to give to the state. So we have to amend our agreement treaty.
Okay, gotcha.
We're collecting from the restaurant. And some of them are only paying $800 or $900 a year. It's a big fee, and they're small businesses. That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I have a motion on consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as it's been amended.
Do I have a second, second, Chief Pash? Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Boyce.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye. We caught her off guard.
It's a new job, I've never done it before.
All right, we're going to have a discussion on action items for 5A, citation authority to the Parks Director, Council HOG.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this was brought to us by the Parks Director. He's here if you have questions of him. But essentially, we have ordinances in our code that are enforceable under Chapter 10, our enforcement ordinance, that are specific to the parks. And so this would, but a code enforcement officer must be designated by the Board of Commissioners. So this will basically add to our code enforcement task force, or crew for parks specifically, one person. So it's to make Josh essentially a code enforcement of our codes that are specific to parks only.
Justin in the park. So one of the issues we've had is our current code enforcement person is...
He's spread pretty thin.
He's spread pretty thin, and rather than have him go out and enforce codes within the park, the thought was let the Parks Director do it, since he's in those parks anyway, and he's familiar with those park rules. So he would basically, with the board's approval, get citation authority to issue citations to those that are doing violations in the park and only in the park.
Mr...
Bring him up.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting, Josh, can you come up and talk, answer some questions?
Absolutely. Josh, Josh is Curry County Parks Director.
Sure. What kind of violations do you normally see that you would issue citations for?
So we have our kind of codes and regulations that we just updated a couple of months back. The board went through the whole process to get them updated. Our main violations that we have are with like stay limits, people overstaying, not paying their fees, or, you know, a common one you see in any county park system would be like a dog off a leash. We're not out there writing citations for putting people that, you know, have their dog off a leash type of a thing. So the idea behind this really is, when I'm out in the park and we have an immediate situation to where there is something that needs to be actively enforced on, and I'm explaining the rules, the regulations to the camper, and it's reached a point to where there's not going to be any sort of voluntary compliance, this allows me to be able to take that next step to issue a citation if it actually got to that step. It'd be rare for that to ever actually happen. Generally, you explain to people what the rules are. Most people are breaking a rule because they don't know what the actual rule is. It's kind of like the last resort. But another side part of this is when we're looking at doing partnerships with, whether it's Forest Service, Social Security Bar, anything like that, part of the big thing is how are we going to enforce these rules? Code enforcement officer Fortman is amazing at his job. He's very responsive to our needs. He comes out as much as he can whenever we can get him there. But if I'm up somewhere, you know, hypothetically on the Elk River, and we've got a camper that's been there for 15 days, refused to pay his fee or anything else like that, and even though I have all this information, this has been an ongoing situation, this allows me to be able to take that enforcement action on-site instead of having to return, schedule a time with Mr. Fortman, and take time out of his already busy schedule to take him on a two-hour ride up that type of thing.
So my question is probably more, you're going to be doing more of the campsite, you know, those kind of, or not ethics, but those kind of violations, not, I just don't want people thinking that you're going to be citing someone for having their plug on wrong on there are...
No, this would be specific things that are listed in the county rules and regulations that...
Okay. Commissioner Boyce, two things. I think it's going to give you some interaction with the public, which, you know, my initial thought is that's probably good, and you're also, correct me if I'm wrong, you would be running a little interference so that your camp host wouldn't have to take on this job. They can report to you, and you can determine to what extent if you want to deal with whatever the issue is at that point.
Yeah.
And you're right there a lot of the time anyway, correct?
Correct. We already have, you know, systems in place for like a chain of command within the parks and what the camp host is supposed to do in enforcing rules, and then when to call the director, and when to call a code enforcement, everything like that. So this would just streamline that type of process.
So does some of it make you, if I may, Mr. Chair, if it's something made you a little bit apprehensive or reluctant, would you, normally you would contact code enforcement officers, or you, worst case scenario, contact the Sheriff's Department, what is your sequence there, and have you thought that, I'm sure you have, about that part, and to, sometimes you get some, or could get some difficult, I'm just looking out for your safety and just trying to learn all that I can.
Yes, so in general, whenever we're doing these types of things, whether it was six months ago, a year ago, or now, it's a pretty standard, straightforward process. We try to keep in line with like what the state parks do, what forestry does, what BLM does, because that type of continuity between the different departments is very important. Our first step for pretty much all of those types of departments is to gain voluntary compliance. We do that by, you know, asking the camper what exactly is going on and, you know, explaining the rules and the regulations to it, and you take it from there. Basically, you just start off with a conversation.
Sure.
Most of the time, it's just education, similar like what Mr. Fortman runs into all the time. We're just providing the education, and you give the camper a reasonable time to, oh, sorry, you give the camper like a reasonable time to, you know, adjust his actions. You don't just bang on the door, say you need to move your trailer right now, or we're going to give you a $440 ticket. That's not going to do anything but create hostility. So you rate that reasonable amount of time, and then you take it to the next step. In general, what we've been doing is we have our verbal just conversation with the camper. If after a reasonable amount of time, if it's not like an emergency type situation, if there's any sort of first-on-person crime, we're calling the law enforcement and everyone If after a reasonable amount of time, if it's not like an emergency type situation, if there's any sort of first-on-person crime, we're calling the law enforcement and everyone else type of thing. But yeah, give them that time. If they haven't adjusted their actions, then we give them a written notice, like just a warning, explain what the rule is, how to correct the action and everything like that. Then at that point, after a reasonable amount of time, you know, kind of what's reasonable to a person depending on the situation. We would go back with more of a, hey, we don't want to have to go the enforcement route, but these are the options that are open to us. We can issue this citation. It is this type of fine. It is this type of misdemeanor. It is this type of a thing. We have all the documentation in place for being able to do that. And that's kind of the way we've been doing it the whole time. Like I said, this is more just to streamline that process so that instead of having to wait several days for Mr. Fortman to be able to take care of those things, or if he needs to be in a different part of the county at the same time, I need him in a different part of the county. We're not running into a conflict to where, you know, he's having to choose one or the other. It just streamlines the process for the parks specifically.
All right, Commissioner Gold?
Two quick questions. You're okay with this? You think this is going to improve your job performance and also keep you the badge?
You're a deputy.
I am okay with it. It's not something that I haven't done in the past in different lines of work that I've been in, rule enforcement, things along those lines. So it's not something that I'm not familiar with. And as far as the badge goes, I'm not quite sure if it comes with like an actual badge or anything like that, but I would need some sort of like, something that looks legitimate. Yeah.
Mr. Fortman said he would work and help us get the badge and the citation.
Okay. That was kind of tongue-in-cheek.
Council Hutter, you have something?
He'll get a badge and I've heard the sequence is triple oh seven.
Oh, cool.
James Bond.
All right, so do I have a motion?
I move that we give the citation authority to the parks director, Josh Hopkin.
I'm second. Second, Mr. Chair. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Voice.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye. All right, next I'd like to notice Ms. Howard and our, and our mayor here. It's nice to see you guys here. We appreciate you coming.
Sitting next to the Brookings City Administrator is Council...
Alan Kidd. I guess I already said hi to him, so. But thanks for coming, guys. All right, and thank you for the use of the, of the building. We appreciate that. You'll get the building. All right, five B social security bar, Josh Hopkins.
That's why.
Good evening. So just to recap real quick, the board of commissioners had a workshop in April of two thousand and nineteen. At the workshop, all three members of this board heard proposal, a presentation on possibly looking into developing the social security bar area into a recreational camping facility. The one point six acre access point is owned by the city of Brookings. The large gravel bar area is owned by the Department of State Lands. In that proposal, I showed different things that could possibly be built on the area, explained that at the time we've been looking into it. And both entities, DSL and the city of Brookings, were interested in taking a further look at this. And the direction from the board was kind of come up with proposals, send them out there and see what type of deal might actually be able to be taken care of. At this time, we've got some answers back, so I wanted to reprise the board what's, you know, been going on with the social security bar and kind of see about taking the next step with it. So with the Department of State Lands, we submitted a proposal that, you know, detailed the idea of doing the lease of their gravel bar area. Department of State Lands representative got back to the county explaining that they'd looked it over with their deputy director and they think that a special use lease of that area for Curry County to allow for RV recreational camping on the bar would be acceptable. They'd be in favor of it. They mentioned saying that they thought it'd be beneficial to all parties involved. They talked about doing a fifteen to twenty-year special use lease of the bar area. In it, there's a five hundred dollar a year minimum lease fee that they're willing to waive in lieu of services rendered from having an onsite camp host and trash services and all the type of things that I've talked about, we could add to the social security bar. With the special use lease, we'd be filling out with them. It's a seven hundred and fifty dollar application fee. So part of the reason to bring it back in front of you guys real quick was not only to let you know what's going on, but let you know there is an application fee that goes along with it that we would be needing to submit a claim on, as well as timelines on the lease. I spoke with DSL about it. They mentioned that it'd probably be about a ninety-day process. There's a public review commenting agency process and everything like that. So then we created a proposal for the city of Brookings. And the city of Brookings proposal, originally I was asking for some variation of an ownership transfer of the social security bar. And the proposal, I left in provisions for like putting in a recreational easement to make sure that the area was used for recreation or providing an easement from the road down to the social security bar to help protect a public access on the city land. The city had a workshop on August fifth to talk about the proposal here at the city council chambers. The council basically were in favor with possibly moving towards a lease option, not any sort of ownership transfer of the bar. And the direction was to bring it back at their next city council meeting as more of a lease style type of a thing. So on August twelfth, there was a city council meeting here. The city council staff report recommended some variation of a fifty-year lease with a ten-year review type thing built into the lease. So that, you know, every ten years, people come back to make sure everything's going well. We've got things that are on track. If there's an issue that needs to be handled that hasn't been addressed or if the county's dragging its heels on something, you know, it gives people a way to shed light on that to continue to move this project forward. At the time, the proposal was mentioned to be in about a dollar a year. So at this point, we're at a situation to where we know both agencies are interested in looking at doing a lease option. For the city of Brookings, their direction was to have, I believe, city manager Howard negotiate up the lease, bring the draft back to the city so that they could have a workshop where they have different parties involved that, you know, the fishermen guides and different people along those lines, the stakeholders come and speak and review the lease. So at this point, really what I'd be looking for is to continue this project. Leases are pretty common in these types of agreements with different recreational type facilities. We've talked about it with the, you know, state parks of doing some variation of a long-term lease that could lead to some idea of ownership to a couple of different places. So really, it comes down to like the terms of the lease and everything like that. So at this time, if the board's interested in continuing, continuing to move forward with this, I would, you know, be requesting a motion just directing, directing the staff to move forward with the different lease processes to bring back the drafts for the board to review. In the packet of information, you've got information, the letter from DSL explaining that, you know, where they're at with us getting a special use lease and explaining that, you know, we'd go through, there'd be a draft for the city to look, or the county to look over and everything along those lines. As well as I attached the city report from staff that mentioned, you know, a fifty-year lease with a ten-year type of review process for it. So that's really where we're at with the social security bar. Moving forward with this project, getting drafts in place and everything like that, everything comes back to the board for final review, comments. There's going to be numerous workshops along the way, I'm sure. So at this point, it's more just confirming that the county is still interested in this project. And a motion along those lines of directing staff to continue through the lease processes will go good with the different agencies involved that we're working with.
Commissioner Voice?
Do you have an idea what this, that time would be involved at this point to go that next, next step? I mean, should, do I have another question?
I don't know, Josh, if you have calculated that or not. Josh did go through and he did look at the revenues and the money it does bring in to have the park. I think, you know, realistically, we do have to look at the fact that eventually we're going to have to add staff to our parks department. Fortunately, the parks department generates enough revenue to cover their expenses. But, you know, this year we're looking at adding three parks along the Al River, possibly four along this park. At the current time, Josh has been doing an excellent job as far as managing those, planning, coordinating with the commission. But eventually, we're going to have to look at adding staff. I don't know when that is, but Josh and I have had that discussion. Josh, this is great, but at some point, we've got to stop and add a little bit more staff, so.
And that's why I asked that question. That one also just got answered, so I'm going to support this. I just don't want to work too fast. I want to make sure not overlook, you know, he's capable, very much so, but I just have a little bit of concern there, Mr. Chair. For, I'll reach to you with that.
Commissioner Gold?
So you're going to make a long-term commitment to stay on as parks director so that we can get these projects going and your question?
Well, I work for Curry County, so I'm not sure how much of a long-term commitment's really my say. Let's be real, eighteen months from now, everything gets changed. But, you know, I've got nowhere else to be. I own a home two miles away, so.
Do I have a motion? So, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Voice?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
So what kind of motion, what kind of question?
I just want to clarify for the record that the person who usually takes roll call is not here tonight, and so I am just trying to help.
I'm a bit of enthusiasm. Jay, just...
Yeah. All right, next we have C courthouse security and I just, you have to forgive me, but I didn't go back over to the block office this afternoon to get my notes. So I'm going to kind of wing this. We had a meeting last week about courthouse security. And Judge Margolis has expressed a deep concern with the security in the courthouse. We've talked about the possibility of changing our courthouse from four openings to one opening with employees having a limited access FOB into the end doors. That's still all up in the air because it could be easily breached if someone were to be outside and waiting. As an employee went through the door, they could push the employee through the door. So I just want everyone in the county to know that, you know, Curry County is a great place to live. And I, of course, chose this place to live fifteen, almost fifteen years ago, to, to spend the rest of my life. But we have to understand that crime is coming here. The serious crime is going to come here. And I believe this board wants to be proactive in heading that off rather than waiting until it gets here to deal with it. So we've moved forward with our sheriff's department. We now have a full acting K-9 unit. And I think our courthouse is probably the most undermanned, unsecure facility that there is for attorneys, judges, and bringing in juvenile, juveniles to face whatever they're facing there. I think we have to have a level of security for them. So they do want to move forward with, we are going to move forward with the sidewalks in the front, to move forward with a, one entrance in the front and limited access entries on the side for now. They're going to ask this board to approve that. The funding is already there for that. It's less than ten thousand dollars to put in the sidewalks. The, the accessible door for handicapped in the front to change that, you know, and, and the ramp and everything for the elevator. That's all included in that. So the group is asking that this, this board approve that, but they also want us to look into, at a minimum, a study to find out what it would cost to get some estimates to secure the side parking lot of the courthouse with a fence and a gated entry and with a key FOB to get into that entry. Because as it stands right now, our judges, attorneys, and like I said, juveniles that are brought into the facility have no protection from, from the public if, if they were to have a situation like so many places across this nation are currently facing. So we would, I would again ask this board to be proactive and let's at least go to the, to the point of looking at what it would cost to put a fence and some gates around the courthouse. And then, of course, that side of the courthouse would become parking for judges, attorneys, and of course, limited law, or law enforcement and limited to their personnel. So that's where we are with that meeting. Again, I'm, I'm just, the funding is already there for the, for the approximate ten thousand for the front door to be repaired, the sidewalks to be put in, and, and then the back door for the, for the elevator access for, for handicapped. We just want to get a formal approval on that from the board to move forward with that. And then secondly, and I don't have the drawings with me, but basically the sidewalk that runs down the backside of the courthouse, it's a step down now that goes to the elevator for handicapped. Are you both familiar with that? We would want to widen that sidewalk so you have full handicap access and make it a ramp so you can get up and down it easily with a wheelchair. And that would be gated as well. So that whoever goes down that ramp would have, they have, will have a security camera there that the sheriff's department mans. They buzz a buzzer. I'm at the side gate, handicap access to get into the courthouse. And a deputy would actually buzz them through that gate and then they go down the ramp and get to the elevator, so. But that, what we want to do with that for right now is just get an estimate on what that would cost to protect that and, and the parking lot. Commissioner Gold?
Just one question. Are there grants, possible grants available for some of these protection measures?
Well, I know that we did speak with some people on that. And yes, there may be some, some funding and then justice. We may get some additional funding from, from justice as well, so. And they're actually going to contribute to the sidewalks. Justice is going to contribute to the sidewalks as well. Commissioner Voice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to disagree just a little bit. The level of exposure, not to diminish the work that you're progressing toward, and I think is critical. I just don't want the public to think with a sheriff right there that we don't have adequate coverage, that if something happened, there wouldn't be a mask or even preventative initially. Do we need to upgrade? Absolutely. I just don't want the public to think that you could just walk in that, that facility and I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it. Thank you.
No, I, I actually want to echo that. You know, I mean, our sheriff's department is right there in that parking lot. Anything they hear going on there is, is there, but we just, you know, like you say, we're trying to be proactive with this. And the other nice thing about this, if we, if we do go to the single-door entry in the front, we have spoken to the sheriff's department and with the additions that we've given to the sheriff's department, we're looking for him to have a deputy manned door at that, at that courthouse during court, during active court hours. So that would be a, another huge security plus for Curry County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That needs to happen. That, there needs to happen without, without compromise. So I'd be proud to offer this motion and move courthouse security forward for your request in your presentation. Thank you.
I'll second that. And just a statement, I think it's important that we are proactive rather than reactive.
Any further discussion? And before, before we take a vote, I will say that we already have the metal detecting device. The sheriff's department already has that, so we don't have to purchase that. All right, roll, please.
Commissioner Voice?
Aye.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
All right, next we have director's report. Ms. Melzer?
Well, I just want to report that with the transit lodging tax, as you know, that ordinance becomes effective September first. And our economic development assistant has been through and created a database and mailing labels for the lodging establishments. She's created a letter and forms and everything, and those all will be mailed out this week yet, so they do have those by September first. The business license also becomes effective September first. That one we'll be doing press releases on because that's a little more difficult to know where our businesses are, but those will be going out. So I do expect next week to be a little bit of a flurry, probably getting a lot of calls this coming month as people become more aware of those codes that have been adopted and what's involved with those and the expenses that are involved. The county accountant was sworn in today, so, which is our finance, in our county is our finance director. So she was sworn in today. The clerk's office swore her in today in the board commissioner's office. So that has been taken care of. We have thirty days to do that, so she was sworn in within thirty days. As far as some employee turnover, looking at some irregular employees, Hank, who was a longtime planning, or I'm sorry, plumbing inspector for us, he has decided that he's no longer going to work for us. So we do have a different plumbing inspector who's going to serve in that irregular capacity. And we had an irregular employee in our office pool who took a different job, so she will no longer be available in the office pool. And then Louise Colstrom, who is an irregular employee, she's a former finance director. We had agreed to keep her on, force her help if we needed it. And she helped us through that, that tough time when we didn't have anyone in place. And now that we do have a finance director seated and she's been here a month that, Louise is done now. So just a little update on that. I did want to let you know too, there was a question earlier... I did want to let you know, too, there was a question earlier today on volunteers and volunteer agreement forms and who has the responsibility to approve volunteers in the county. And Council Huddle did give me some information that he did get from Julie Swift. And basically, the current form, the board does have an order and it's from 2014, and it approved a volunteer agreement where that was left up to the department head to approve the volunteers. So, I know the board did want to receive that, brought back for discussion, so we'll put that on the next agenda for discussion, just to make sure everyone's okay with how that process works. But currently, that's how it's set up.
If you would, in the beginning of my comments, if you would, I need to speak with you about something before we do the matter. I've got an answer for you on something. I don't really have a lot to comment on, other than I'd like to thank, again, the city of Brookings for allowing us to do this. I would also like to thank Congressman DeFazio for taking time out of his schedule, coming here. All three of the commissioners here were seated with him this morning, as well as the city of Brookings, the city of Gold Beach. The ports were there. It was basically a full house this morning for a breakfast meeting with him. He was very kind and very thorough in his allowing us to talk and discuss with him our issues and hopes for this county. And he addressed each and every one of them in the brief time that we had together. I'm really glad to see it. We did speak at length about the rivers, the amount of silt and rock in the rivers right now and housing. And I'll let the other commissioners speak about what they spoke with him about. But those were two of the main issues I spoke with him about. And I was very, very glad to hear his responses to those questions. So, that's basically my comments. Commissioner Boyce, you're next.
Thank you. So, today's been quite a day. We had a workshop, so the public knows if you get a chance to tune into that, go to our website. We had some, I want to say exceptional presentations on housing and the homeless issue in Curry County, workforce housing, absolutely all above, all the above. Five particular presentations, the Curry County Action Housing Task Force, Director Smelzer, all of them had AV support, too, so I hope the public can get a chance to review that. You know, two weeks ago, we declared a housing emergency. We've sent that on to the governor. And we're hopeful that in being in the capacity to work with our office, obviously, it's not just isolated to Curry County or even rural Oregon. Talking to Congressman DeFazio, it is getting to be, he agrees, if not the biggest, one of the biggest issues in Oregon and not just, also, again, not just rural areas, very common to our state. So, I'm very appreciative of Brooklyn City Council's past and support. I don't want to say, I'll let you speak on that, but I think that it was in support of the county efforts. Being a commissioner for only two and a half years, that's been one of my biggest, I don't want to say challenges, but goals, is to bring the county together with the different communities. And to get the news, we did that this Monday night, the council, I think, will really bring some long-term benefit. Back to the presentations that we had today, the room was full and it was a very productive meeting. Obviously, the next step, where do we go from here? How do we turn that into? I mean, we had excellent tribal representation. We had Neighborhood Works, Umpqua, who wants to help Curry County. We had Oregon Coast Community Action. We had United Way. We had just people that are compassionate. As you said, they want to live here, too, or they do live here, why, and how they believe they can help. We had good public comment and testimony. So, I think as we, again, as we move forward, that's gonna give us some credibility when we do need or hopefully get to a point. We're not there yet where we really have to look for significant funds, other than if the board approves and agrees that we need a housing coordinator. We like, we've got three or four different financial entities that we believe would be very good candidates for helping us with a two-year plan on that coordinator. And that person would be, initially, when we discussed this, we thought that would be just maybe part-time this, part-time housing. And I think that's probably, I'm hopeful that it will evolve into a total housing person that we can recruit and put the good work here, and that's the next step. And then, after, and also part of our fire strategic plan, early on, how we can help the other communities, getting public awareness, just simple commitment to, I mean, their, Planning Director Crockett today just did an exceptional job. She has some very correct, as did you, Director Smelzer, very committed and deliberate suggestions that we can do within our county and we can pass on to the cities, hopefully. And so, that's, the meetings we have today give me a lot of traction, a lot of hope. And so, I think we can take this issue on squarely. Commissioner Pash has been working at the federal level. I've been working at the local and state level on, changing subjects here at the Cape Langau Airport. That is a, it's a state facility, as you know. And we're working with a guy, my name is John Wilson, who is the facilities guy for the Oregon Department of Education. And he has spent three times down, I just saw Emergency Manager Coordinator Jeremy Dumire come in. And so, also with Economic Coordinator Madison, we've been spending time on this. And it is recognized on the coast of Oregon as one of, maybe one of the top two good airports for emergency management and how that would be so important to Curry County. It would very likely, as you know, Mr. Chair, go from Crescent City all the way to at least Reedport and likely inland as far as grants pass, possibly even, probably not met for the grants pass. So, we're putting this all together, getting FEMA involved, getting Oregon Emergency Management. So, I'm very excited about that project. Last thing I'll report to this meeting, and there's a lot more, but I'll step aside for Commissioner Gold there. Also, our people have been working very hard on a regional, Roscoe-Siskiyou Regional Fire and Emergency Training Center. And we've got a couple different locations identified. We've, I don't want to say we too much, because this is the grandchild of Gold Beach Fire Chief Dyson Greger. And he's been working on this off on three or four years. And the two sites we have, we've, they have got over some hurdles. And we're better than Curry County. We need hot shot firemen. We need firefighters at all levels, but also emergency management people, emergency highly trained, could even go into long course from down the road. And right now, we don't have adequate fire training facilities around Oregon. It's a waiting, general waiting line. Get your reservation in. And so, with the level that our county is susceptible to wildfire in our homes, it's one more step towards prevention and preparation. And I think we're making some really big progress there, and I'm grateful. The last thing I would add is, the last eight months of this board is been really a pleasant time for me to see the, everybody showing up early, everybody dedicated, everybody committed, looking for problems to solve and working together. And just absolute measurable progress that we didn't have the first two years that I was on the board. And so, I just, I don't want to get unfair expectations, but I'm very optimistic about the future. And those are the primary things that concern me as a commissioner and representing the people to the very best of my ability. And so, back to the strategic plan and all hands on deck. And it's just, it's just a tribute to everybody sitting up here and the relationships that we've built and the effort and the listening skills. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold?
I have a couple of things. First of all, at the breakfast with Congressman DeFazio, I've been concerned with getting a permanent fix of the Fiskinaga Slide area. I know we've put millions and millions of dollars into that over the years. And getting a permanent fix, I think, is the right way to go. Also, I've been meeting with SWAC and community members, and they are working on getting their campus more utilized by the people in the area. And we're starting some seminars beginning in September. September 5th is the first one. Everybody Loves Dogs, including myself. And we're gonna have dog behavior classes for that month. And then, a lot of other classes are gonna be taking place, home fire safety, computer intro seminars. I know some of us old folks are kind of in need of learning a few things, like Photoshop and stuff like that, bird washing. We've got experts from various, in our community, we've got lots of experts who are available and we're working on getting some of those folks in, personal finances, even some cooking demonstrations. And we're thinking of getting some of the local chefs to come in and do some of that. So, anyway, there's some exciting things happening at SWAC, and we're trying to get the community involved. And if any of you are interested in being involved, contact me. Or if you know of anybody who's an expert that we could use for some of these various seminars, contact me. And I would love to pass the information on. Thank you.
All right, next we have our presentations. Eight-eight would be Tsunami Siren Education. Mr. Dumire?
Just real quick, that presentation I emailed out, is there a way to get it on screen or?
I don't think so, I'm sorry.
Improvision, that works. Well, again, name's Jeremy Dumire, great guy, emergency manager. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come here a little late. I just got back from Humboldt County. Was hoping to have that PowerPoint up on the screen to be able to use as a teaching tool, but in the absence of such.
Jeremy, is that something perhaps you're able to pull up online?
Well, is there another presentation that can go my step with a moment?
We could have Rich go.
Okay, let's do that and see if I can get the technical issues worked out.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Eight-eight, Richard Christensen, four-wheel drive, a rubber chip sealer.
Good evening, Commissioners. Curry County Roadmaster, Richard Christensen. I'm here to seek approval, board approval, to purchase a new Etnire chipsealer, 2019, all-wheel drive for $324,000. And we went out to bid for this equipment. We reached out to four of our heavy equipment vendors, and we also advertised in Daily Journal of Commerce and our local paper in Gold Beach. And we've been having plenty of problems with our old chipsealers, 45 years old. We had some safety issues this year. We took it to our safety committee, and they recommend replacing this equipment as well. This equipment is the future of the road department as far as our maintenance programs currently. When we pave roads, it costs us over $200,000 a mile. With this equipment, we can chip seal our roads for $37,000 a mile. So, we're trying to increase our chip seal program from eight to 10 miles a year to 20 miles. And we're trying to decrease our paving schedule to about three miles a year from six miles a year. So, we're trying to do that. And also, you mentioned Huskanagan Slide just now. And the state managers are gonna be meeting with the road department next week because they would like us to work with them and do an IGA to chip seal Carbon Dillow Road next year. And so, we're trying to modify our chip seal schedule to maybe have you approve an IGA that we could work with each other to get that chip sealed.
And this is one of the things that you and I have spoken about as your liaison. And we've talked at length about some of the equipment that he's needed to upgrade. Again, this machine's 45 years old. I have to look at some of the paperwork, some bills that we just paid the other day. And some of these machines are down for maintenance, and it's unbelievable what it costs to repair some of this stuff. Plus, the hours of his men sitting on the side of the road waiting for somebody to pick it up because it's broke. But you also mentioned to me last, a couple of weeks ago, you know, about just exactly what we just spoke about on Huskanagan, about being able to do some other contracts with this equipment that will make it viable and keep your crew busy so that county's getting their best bang for the buck. You were talking about that?
Right, and so, US Forest Service is also reaching out to us as well. And so, this equipment would allow us to do that work where we could be cost-effective, be efficient. Right now, the current equipment, when it broke down this year, we had to pay $1,600 to have the oil shipped back over to Hill, to Medford, because we couldn't, the brakes went out on it and it actually rolled away from us. So, we were very lucky. No one was injured. And so, yeah, the goal is, is that we would be able to reach out to our local cities and other governmental agencies to have IGAs to help them with their street maintenance programs.
Sounds like Tom Brooke. We have a new chip sealer, so if you need us, let us know. Commissioner Boyce?
If you did do, go to the IGA agreements, Carptownville, which we all, our intern's kind of picked up on that. But you're adding pavement, wait, correct?
Excuse me?
Are you adding pavement when you do the chip seal? And it's a different kind of finish, right?
It's a different finish. Chip seal is, we're just adding very little weight. You're adding a wearing course to the road. You're putting the oil on the road to help seal all the cracks and to extend the life of the oils in the existing road. And you're adding rock to it to add a wearing course for traction. And then, you're adding another oil on top of that. And so, chip seals are not as good as overlays. Overlays, you extend the life of a road 25 years. Chip seal, you extend the life of a road like 10 years.
A lot, a lot less initial cost, correct?
Yes, five and a half times less, at least, less cost.
I think it's good for the public to get that message, so.
The good news for the public was, it was, how much per mile difference?
It's about $210,000 a mile for overlays. And it's about, in the past, it's been $37,000 a mile for chip seals.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just give us a picture there of how long it takes to load, unload, load back at the end of the day? Do you very seldom leave your equipment at the job site, correct? Do you always bring it back to the plant?
No, we do not always bring it back. Because that would, it costs a lot of money to mobilize equipment to the far ends of the county where our roads are. Some of our roads are 90 miles away from each other.
Good.
So, we mobilize it, and then we work with landowners and other agencies to store our equipment.
Typically, loads and unload is probably quite a process.
Yes, yes, it is a process, but we have good equipment.
Commissioner Gold?
Just a couple of questions. I always ask this question. Is it in your budget, number one?
Yes, it's in our budget.
Perfect. And number two, have you done projections? How far out will it end up paying for itself or?
No.
Geographic calculation?
Yeah. And, but what I have also placed in our budget is that this equipment will not be purchased out of our road fund. Initially, it will be, but the state will be reimbursing us through STIP funds for its purchase. So, there'll be zero impact to the road fund. So, if you make this, if you agree to this purchase tonight, tomorrow I'll be reaching out to the state for an agreement to use STIP funds for, to reimburse us for this purchase.
I will make that motion.
Second, Mr. Chair. I like when I say we're further discussing. Roll, please.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yes.
Commissioner Pash?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Somebody in the call, seven eight?
I'm emailing them, seven eight, thank you.
While we're still waiting for Mr. Dumire, because it seems like they're still working some issues, I just want to, on my presentation for reference, you won't forgive us. I just want to, on my presentation for veterans, you won't forgive this. I'd actually like to bring this back at our next meeting because I don't have all my notes. And there are some notes that are very poignant and important on this. But I will say that the federal government is now, for disabled veterans, is forgiving a lot of their loans. And I don't know, I don't recall off the top of my head how far it goes. But there are some mortgage loans that they're forgiving. There's a lot of educational loans they're forgiving completely for disabled veterans. So I'll bring this back at our next meeting, but stay tuned.
Present just, it was like 200,000 bets would get there, I think it was more than that.
There's more than that though, I mean, it's huge.
Goes beyond the mortgage?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't think it did. That's good to hear.
Yeah, it goes to student loans as well.
Not any kids.
And it goes to someone that wants to go to college that's disabled. They won't, they'll never have to file for the loan, they'll pay for it in advance.
So is that veterans or?
Disabled veterans.
Oh, just, okay. I didn't know whether it applied to disabled folks in general, to those college loans.
So how we doing, Mr. Dumire?
Just about there, it looks like.
All right.
In the meantime, if there's something else I can go on to my second part of the presentation.
Sure, so why don't you do that while we're waiting.
So again, Jeremy Dumire, Curry County Emergency Manager. And I was told I could get a pass on some of my quarterly reports, but I'm here and I might as well get that taken care of. So a lot of this past three months has been focused on the recovery from the winter and spring storms. So a lot of coordination with FEMA and the state, working with Roadmaster Christensen on those issues. A lot of training opportunities, working, in fact, I just got back, except from Humboldt County 10 minutes ago or so. Doing a disaster donations management training, a volunteer, spontaneous volunteer training as well. That was quite exciting for me, just to put it out there. There's a lot of good work that we can do that needs to be done based on just that training alone. We've talked about the tsunami sirens, we're going to have that conversation again today, more focused on the tsunami risks. Of course, we participated in Curry County Fair, we stood up the command tent, had the Pelican Bay Amshur Radio Club participate in there. Really neat, we are also going to participate in Slammin' Salmon Festival coming up on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Instead of just running a tent and education booth, which there will be that component, we're also going to run an incident command booth. So we're going to do communications and volunteer exercise during the entire event. So we will have CERT, we will have the Pelican Bay Amshur Radio Hams, myself, the event coordinators will all be working on incident command capabilities within that structure. Let's see here. We held off on doing a basic CERT class in Gold Beach. Normally, we would have done one in August. However, because of how busy things have been, we decided to put one off until this next month. So we're going to do a CERT basic training. It is free, it's a 20-hour course, it's a Friday night, Saturday and Sunday. It'll be the last weekend of September, 27th through 29th. It's Friday night from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., Saturday, Sunday, 8:00 to 5:00, both days with a disaster scenario in there. Also going to do another one in November here in Brookings. And that one, I believe, will be the 15th through the 17th. Just continue to work forward on a lot of the products we have as far as the disasters. I heard Commissioner Boyce talk about the Cape Blanco Airport. Been working a lot with the state with John Wilson there. Identified that as a very critical lifeline for, not just Curry County, but for our region in the event of a major disaster. I will be going down, I got the email today, that the Border Coast Airport Authority will host me for presentation on the 5th.
Yes.
So I will be hurriedly putting that together, I was anticipating October, but sooner the better.
Well, that's September.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I anticipated October, but.
Oh.
Yes. But sooner the better.
Okay.
And of course, we've also worked on the fire training facility. I did go to the Governor's Council on wildfire prevention mitigation. I did get a chance to speak briefly at that council about the Rogue Assist U Fire Training Facility. So that's, in a very quick nutshell, some of the things that have been going on in emergency management.
One more thing on the Cape Blanco Airport, just while you're doing, I spoke with Commissioner Boyce about it earlier. I have been in touch with the FAA on that for the initiating process for an ILS approach into that airport and also the issues concerning the runway versus just lengthening the taxiway. We don't actually need a runway per se, all we need to do is lengthen the taxiway.
Correct.
For emergency procedures landing. But they are moving forward. They are going to begin the process, which is an arduous process, to get an ILS approach into there. Being a pilot, I know that it would be approved, it's just going to be time because of the issue of the ILS and there would be some barriers.
Yeah, and it's quite exciting just on that Cape Blanco Airport, what is being envisioned by the stakeholders involved to increase the runway just a little bit, give a better approach, to increase the taxi capabilities. And then with RJ's 64 acres, the ability to be able to store goods as they come in in a lifeline. I'm beyond capable of painting work on this kind of project.
And that's something everyone, anyone that does care should be, you know, maybe up to speed on. Commissioner Boyce, you've been working for a couple of years on this, I've only gotten involved in it in the last couple of months. But as Mr. Dumire said, we are looking for a place that should we have an emergency procedure here, you know, an absolute emergency in Southern Oregon, we need a place to be able to land and stage emergency things. Water, food, fuels, that we can actually get into, into the county should we lose access to the outside, loss of bridges, those kinds of things. So Commissioner Boyce is working with David Brock Smith and some others in the state to move that forward. And like I just said, you know, getting an ILS approach into the airport and making it a viable FBO for, to set up for emergency procedures, but also a private, a private FBO as well. And to have fuel and everything else there would be a detriment or a huge plus to this county. So I apologize for the continued effort on that, sir.
Reminded probably with that.
It's just, it's basically a place where people, if you land, you have fuel services, you have phone services. It's a place to stay until you can get out, you know, it's a, what's the word?
Place to operate.
Yeah, right, but it's basically, yeah, a terminal basically for the public.
And on that point, right now, Cape Blanco is classified as a classified airport. Basically put Cessnas, single-engine, and emergency operations. With very minor upgrades such as the ILS approach, it could be a Class 3 or Class 2 airport which would take on a lot more traffic capability.
And you could land twin jets in there, diesel.
Well, even with the current runway, you can land C-17. Yeah, C-13 is a little large at this point, but C-17.
Much more, we need the 400-foot of additional taxiway runway. Built 1945, would you care to give some of the statistics regarding that? Why are rates so high and why it could get up to that Class 2 level potentially?
Well, so the runway is just about a mile, 5100 feet. The airport itself is about 243 feet above sea level on good bedrock. The pavement is about 18 feet in depth, I say pavement, it's concrete. It is capable of handling 530,000 pounds of landing and takeoff weight. It was built by the Navy in 1944. And it is considered to be one of the few airports on the coast with the inclusion of Tillmook and Newport that would be available post Cascadia earthquake. Of those three, Blanco is considered to be the one that is most likely to be staying, so.
How are we doing here, guys?
I'm having a computer glitch.
Why don't we just go ahead and just do a winged approach to this because it's getting 20 after 7 already.
All right.
Thank you very much.
So I apologize to those in the back that can't see the computer very well. Those that aren't watching on the internet will be able to see the presentation. Technology is a beautiful thing. Especially when it is more in your favor. So earlier this month, we did talk in Quirripur about the tsunami warning systems, specifically about the tsunami sirens. So I've kind of amended this presentation to go more on the warning systems. First things first, when we talk about the warning systems, we need to talk about what is a tsunami? This image here on the computer is not a tsunami. What it is, is a post-apocalyptic scene from Hollywood. A wave towering four or 500 feet above buildings, not realistic, it's not a tsunami. There are two types of tsunamis that we experience here on the coast. First, you have the local tsunami. Now, that is a very large event for us, that's the big event. And that's where you have a tsunami generated by a local earthquake off our shore, off the Cascadia subduction zone. When I say very large, I'm not talking about a six or six and a half like we get off of Cape Blanco on a fairly regular basis. Not even a 7.2 like they just had down in California the month and a half previous. A very large earthquake that we would experience off our shores would release 30 to 900 times the power of what happened in Richcrest. A 9.0 earthquake is 900 times more powerful than a 7.0. California does not have the capability of producing such an earthquake, different pulses. But when you do have this eight or nine magnitude earthquake, it will displace a lot of ocean water, send a column in two directions. That water will push up in a series of tidal surges, not waves. In the last 10,000 years, scientists have been able to map 40 of these eight and 9.0 magnitude events off our coast. Half, so those eights that have occurred, have all been centered down here. The 9.0 is a full rip from approximately Eureka, California to Vancouver Island, 700 miles. We do get these, as I mentioned, the last one was January 26, 1700, about 9:30 at night. If you do the math, we get one of these large events about every 250 years. Now, it would be very catchy to say that we're overdue, obviously 319 is larger than 250. But the truth is, we don't know. What we do know is we're storing energy for the next one. It could happen while I'm talking, it could happen in 30 years, it could happen in 1,000 years. But we are due for another large earthquake at some point. The problem when it comes to our warning systems is that the ground shaking is going to cause enough damage to infrastructure that the ground shaking will be the only warning you get. This picture on my computer screen, for those that can see it, is of the Good Friday earthquake in Alaska in 1964. It was a magnitude 9.2 event. This is a very finished picture, in fact, the pavement here is probably 10 feet below where its surface level was at one point. You can see in this that there's a lot of infrastructure that's just down. And this is what I would expect for Curry County. It's been modeled that we'll have about six or eight feet of subduction, fairly similar. And our ability to dispatch any sort of warning system will be greatly affected. I would say inhibited to the point of not being able to happen. So I can't stress enough, when it comes to a large local earthquake, you feel the ground shake. As soon as it's safe to do so, evacuate, evacuate, evacuate. The ground shaking is the only warning you should expect to get. And you have approximately 10 to 15 minutes after the start of shaking to evacuate to high ground. And being that we're here in the city of Brookings, the city itself is generally outside of the local tsunami hazard zone. There are some places, often like Memory Lane, or as you get down closer to the shores in elevation, that are in that local tsunami hazard zone. But Brookings by and large is well over 100 feet elevation on these bluffs. Harbor's a different story, generally speaking, anything west of 101 is close or in the tsunami hazard zone. But Brookings by and large is relatively safe. Unfortunately, I'm using an older version of PowerPoint, wasn't able to use the new version, so my video is not going to load. Distant tsunami is what we generally experience more often. Distant tsunami is just that, something that is sourced from a distant earthquake, such as in Kamchatka, Alaska, Japan, Chile. A subduction zone earthquake in those regions, that generates a wave and sends it our direction. In the event of an Alaska earthquake and tsunami, we have about four hours lead time before that wave gets to us. Japan is about 10, 12 hours, Chile 18 hours. Since 1933, we've had 31 distant tsunami events on or near our shores, including Crescent City. That's about one every seven or eight years. The last one we had was, of course, March 11th, 2011, which was the Japan earthquake event from Tohoku. The video that I had in this slide was of an individual that was down in the Port of Brookings Harbor, clear down the Port of Brookings Harbor, filming the incoming tidal surges. I will put this caveat out there. The Port of Brookings Harbor is one of the few places on our coast that is in the distant tsunami hazard zone. Of the 177 buildings that are mapped on the distant tsunami hazard zone, almost every last one of them is in the Port of Brookings Harbor. So the fact that there were multiple people, in fact, there's a lot of videos, you go on YouTube, you can find a lot of people that were down in the harbors on the jetties during that event filming this. They were actually at risk despite having tsunami sirens blaring, despite having law enforcement volunteers clearing the beaches. People were so down there being a part of the incident. When it comes to the hazard zone, the map on the left of my screen is the distant tsunami hazard. The map on the right is the local tsunami hazard for South County. And again, I apologize that this is on the laptop screen instead of in a larger format. But it's pretty easy to look at and realize that there's very limited hazard from a distant tsunami. It is generally confined to beaches, low-lying areas around those beaches, bays, harbors, sloughs, estuaries. Just opposed with a local event, that will go several miles inland. In fact, at Gold Beach, it would go, clear up the Lauter Creek Bridge, which is eight miles of the river?
Little less.
The Chekov River here, clear up the North Fork. So a local event has more capability, in fact, you can go higher in elevation. A local event will go, in some locations, depending upon topography, up to 100 feet and run up. Whereas a distant tsunami event generally is an 18-inch surge. An Alaskan event can be as much as a 30-foot surge. That is at the ultimate distant event. And that is, again, dependent upon topography. So when we get these tsunami hazard alerts, I get several different ones. Almost daily, I get information statements, interesting earthquake occurred, no tsunami will be generated, carry on with normal business. I get those as a matter of routine, earthquakes off of Cape Blanco, almost daily. Alaska, anywhere in the Pacific Ring of Fire, we get those alerts routinely. A tsunami watch is like what happened on January 26 of the year previous. Whereas Alaska had a large, I believe, magnitude eight earthquake off their shores. It was not a subduction earthquake, it was a strike-slip earthquake. But because of the magnitude, a tsunami watch was generated for our shores. The watch is very simple, interesting earthquake occurred, no data yet on whether a tsunami is coming or not, stay tuned for more information. The great thing about that earthquake event was there's a lot of dark buoys, tsunami detection buoys, off the shores, especially in Alaska and as you come down here. And almost immediately after that event started, we were able to tap into those dark buoys and see that there was no major change in the tidal gauges. And we were able to quickly figure out that we were not going to have a distant tsunami event in that case. A tsunami advisory is something like what we would have received in 2011 from Japan. Large earthquake has happened, a tsunami has been detected. And stay out of the water, away from beaches, waterways, stay out of the very low-lying areas. Tsunami warning, we likely will not get. That is where we get the local earthquake. And it will generate a very large tidal. That is where we get the local earthquake, and it will generate a very large tidal surge for us. The reason we won't get that warning, in my estimation, is because we won't have the communications capabilities to receive that warning. Again, the ground shaking is the only thing we'll get. I will put a caveat on this, we will get tsunami warning messages, but those will generally get downgraded quickly to an advisory or watch as soon as the information comes out from a distant sourced event such as Alaska. But generally speaking, a warning, we won't receive that for a true local tsunami event. However, when there is a warning, it's very simple, move to high ground, get out of elevation as soon as you're safe to do so. So when we talk about warning systems, there are several different warning systems in place. We have the Everbridge Reverse Nine One One system, where we can dispatch from Gold Beach or even the city of Brookings has the ability to send out reverse Nine One One notifications to the citizens and say, hey, there's a life safety event going on, here's what is expected, and we can send that out to you very quickly through text, through your landline, through your cellphone, through your email account, however you sign up. And the system is designed to notify you. Very simply, if you sign up three different phone numbers and two email addresses, and you pick up the phone on the second call it makes, the system has done what it is designed to do, it will not go any further in that phone tree that you've established. So if you want each person to be notified separately on different numbers, you need to create separate accounts. But it is a very effective system, we have about thirteen thousand citizens here in Curry County signed up on the Everbridge Rivers, Nine One One system, excuse me, on their talking. In October, we will also have the ability to use the Wireless Emergency Alerts WEA. That's very similar to the Amber Alert, some people receive on their phones, or the Presidential Alert that we got back in October. So we actually, as locals, will have the ability to use that system, tap into the cellphone towers nearby, hit a geographical area, and those cellphones that are enabled to receive those messages will get those pings without having to sign up for it. You do need to check with your cellphone provider to see if your cellphone is available to receive those emergency alerts. Each cellphone is different, so I couldn't tell you how to do it on your phone specifically, just, I know that my Samsung's different than the Motorola I have, and enabling it is different than just owning those two phones with the same carrier. But for Wireless Emergency Alerts, get a hold of your cellphone provider, see if you have that ability to receive those, we will have that ability in October. We also have been working heavily on the Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT team. In fact, I'm very happy to report that the city of Brookings has its own South County CERT team now under the jurisdiction of the Fire Department. That program has been, I think, an absolute blessing to have here in Curry County. The augmentation of additional volunteers that are trained to assist in a disaster, to help out with the firefighters, law enforcement, EMS, search and rescue, they have that training to help out in a disaster, and they're our neighbors that are well-trained and take that twenty-hour course. We can use those CERT volunteers to do an evacuation of the low-lying area in a distant tsunami event. We also, of course, have our law enforcement partners, or EMS, or Fire Department partners, we have ways to make notifications on the low-lying areas in a distant tsunami event. Now, we voted earlier on, I say "we," the board voted earlier on in August regarding these tsunami sirens, and this is where this discussion started from. When I took over this position about two years ago, I had seventeen tsunami sirens in the entire county. I have worked on two of those sirens, one in Port Orford, one here at Harris Beach. I currently have, oh, I say currently, as of the beginning of this month, I had four operational sirens, reliably operational sirens. The problem with those tsunami sirens is that they're quite expensive to work on, and they're unreliable. Their technology is from the forties, fifties, sixties, they came out of military installations, nuclear facilities, they're metal, they were never a good fit for our coastal climate, and they're mechanical. An electronic tsunami siren cannot produce the tone a mechanical one can, cannot get the distance, so these break down pretty easily if they're not constantly used. The ones that are operational are the Fire Department sirens in Gold Beach and Port Orford because they get toned almost daily and are able to break that rust. Five and a half years ago, the county actually considered the cost of these tsunami sirens versus the systems we have in place, in fact, the slide I have right now is an article from the Delmore Tripliquet, February nineteenth of two thousand and fourteen, where we actually considered the obsolescence of these tsunami sirens. I also talked to a lot of my coastal counterparts, my emergency managers in Oregon, to try to see who still operates as a county these tsunami siren systems, and without getting any information from Douglas or Lane Counties, every county in Oregon reported the same thing, the counties do not operate tsunami sirens. There are municipalities that may, but the counties themselves do not fund or operate tsunami sirens. They're just antiquated technology that has a very limited reach, and there's much newer systems that have a better capability. When I say a limited reach, this is the new Omni Eclipse Safe Siren Head. This is very similar to what we have right now on some of the poles out there like at Harris Beach. The reach on this tsunami siren head, the effective range at seventy decimals, which is a little quieter than I'm talking right now, is twenty-two hundred feet. So if I go north and south from that tsunami siren pole, I have point eight miles of tone that is audible. If all seventeen tsunami sirens were lined up end to end on the coast, and they're not, in fact, one sitting right here on top of this fire station, one's clear up Cape Fear at four hundred feet elevation, but if all seventeen sirens were lined up end to end on the coast here in Curry County, I'd have thirteen and a half miles of coverage on an eighty-mile coastline. In fact, I don't even have, I've never had sirens in the Crystal River area on the beach, there's one at the fire station on the other side of the hill, but we have the wave bash, we have all sorts of events there, and you would think that that would be a logical place to have a siren, because it's never existed. And you'd have to put several up just to cover that stretch of coastline. Where this discussion came from was this siren right here at Boyce Co. Park in Floris Lake. Unfortunately, you're not going to be able to see the picture very well from where you're seated, those at home can see it, I'm sure, clearly. That siren has deteriorated rapidly to the point where the entire head has to be replaced. That unit, just to replace that, is twenty-two thousand dollars. That assumes that the electrical system is in good shape, that assumes that the radio frequency system is in good shape, that assumes that the computer and motherboard from two thousand and one is still in operational condition, that assumes that the heater system within that housing unit is still in good shape. To replace these wholesale, you're looking at fifty to a hundred thousand dollars per system, all new. The one thing I did forget to mention in Port Orford is, when I did speak with the technicians about that siren head, specifically the Boyce Co. Siren Head, they also mentioned that the pole that it's sitting on likely would have to be replaced due to its age and the deterioration of that pole. So these systems are quite expensive just to replace them. So when we're talking in Port Orford about this, we're speaking more towards the tsunami siren issue, the cost to repair them is excessive versus their capability and benefit, juxtaposed to the other systems we have in place. You know, I mentioned the Everbridge Reverse Nine One One system, the county pays six thousand five hundred dollars annually to be able to get those notifications out to you. And I'll actually walk that back a bit because half of that is paid through a grant. So we actually pay very little to be able to do that Reverse Nine One One compared to a twenty-two thousand dollar siren head at just one location. Oregon Counties and the coast, as I mentioned, have discontinued their use. We have those multiple warning systems in place, and again, and in minimum, we have four hours of lead time from a distant tsunami event sourced in Alaska. If it is a local event, the ground shaking will be quite sufficient to give you warning that a tsunami is more likely than not coming. Again, ten, fifteen minutes from the start of shaking to evacuate. And in the early part of this month, the board, as I recommended, did vote to end the use, the county use of tsunami sirens. There are municipalities, Port Orford still has the ability to use theirs as a tsunami siren if they choose, they can go into the Fire Department, turn the dial, and it will go off for the set amount of time. Gold Beach has that ability, so we can, in terms of municipalities, use them if they choose, but we're not going to fund these anymore again, they're just not worth it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Jeremy, is your presentation online on your website, on the county page?
Not on the county page, the Port Orford presentation is on my Facebook page, I need to get the time to put that on the website.
Okay, so it's on the Facebook page?
Yes, and there's also an interview that I did with K O B I that's also on my Facebook page with the same basic presentation.
Okay. Mr. Voice.
I have a legislative report.
Well, can we finish? Moving on to number ten, higher orders, transfer of existing employee to community development assistance.
Okay, this is where Barbara Holt, when we had discussed, she currently lives in Surveyor's Office as an irregular employee, three days a week, and we were hiring her basically for this position where she's going to add two days, or I should say, two days worth of work, helping Dave Forkman, basically primarily helping Dave Forkman out. So she's going from irregular to full-time.
On that note, can we, can I also ask, are we still looking to increase staff for law enforcement?
Yes, we are. Actually, I did a job description for that, it was sent off to LGD P I, and that's going to come forward on our next agenda.
Okay. We don't, we don't need more.
Yes, we don't.
Yeah, I think it's that. Okay, I'll make promotions if we improve this.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. Roll, please.
Commissioner Voice.
Yes, I forgot to turn your page over, sorry.
Commissioner Hesch.
I.
Commissioner Gold.
I.
Okay, now you're up.
I just looked for a legislative report, a certain gentleman just walked in.
DBS is in the House.
He thought this is a Brookings City Council meeting, he might leave though.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm sorry I was here sooner, I was with former Secretary Bradbury at the library giving a presentation on climate change and the former cap and trade bill that was unsuccessful in the legislature. David Rocksmith, State Representative, House District One, thank you so much again for traveling around the county as you had promised to do so, to hear the update, Commissioner Gold, we're in your backyard tonight.
She gets home sooner.
Right, she does.
She's still six miles away, so.
That's what I was telling former Secretary Bradbury, he is, he's a constituent, goes abandoned, and so he's got a half hour longer than I. Just real quick, as you know, we were successful in getting the one point seven million dollars for the Settlemode treatment in the county, of course, we have the soft problem that's still progressing, especially the E1 strain, the task force is still doing its work, and part of that one point seven million does allocate the fifty thousand dollars to the Association of Oregon Counties to still facilitate that task force. We were also successful in getting the two million dollars for the Curry General Hospital or Curry Health Network so that we can assist the history clinic here in Brookings to open up to a full-fledged emergency department so that we see no more deaths in the parking lot and can provide the services that are necessary for emergencies and get those folks the care that they need, especially in that golden hour. Couple of things to note, especially considering all the work that the Commission does on the forest issues and the Chethrow Bar Fire, and something that I want to do more of, I passed, drafted a pass, H J M one, which is House Journal one, which assists and urges Congress to pass the Forest Management and Rural Assistance Ability Act, which of course, Commissioner Voice is a member of the Association of ONC Counties, and work closely with the Association of ONC Counties on the language, and it's something that's incredible to have the Association of Oregon Counties, or excuse me, Association of ONC Counties, working with our federal delegation on a management plan that will help reestablish those payments to the counties that are so needed to fund the services such as public safety and our schools. We also passed, and I chief sponsor, the only Republican to do so, Senate Bill two fifty-six, which sets a moratorium on any oil and gas off the coast of Oregon, nor does allow it to transverse over Oregon waters, which Oregon owns three miles of water, into Oregon. We wouldn't have seen very much in the form of resources or dollars coming in if they were discovered, but we would have definitely affected and impacted our fishing grounds, which is more important to our communities. We were successful in passing, especially for a constituent down here in South County that brought it to my attention, House Bill twenty-three seventy-five, which deals with sane nurses or sexual assault nurse examiners, in making sure that the district attorney drops a response to the sexual assault victims and has a sane nurse on the board and moving forward to having a sane nurse within our medical facilities so that we never have to have the problem that we had before where a victim of sexual assault had to travel miles away to get the exam necessary to report prosecution. Other things to note, we were successful recently, and worked very hard, was involved in an agricultural ditch bill in a work group, twenty-four thirty-seven, excuse, yeah, House Bill twenty-four thirty-seven, and it was on the governor's veto list, she did not veto the bill after a lot more work that I think we're, I'm not going to say that we worked on with the legislature, but it allows farmers and ranchers prior to this legislation to only clear fifty cubic yards of material out of their ag ditches without a permit. This takes us to three thousand, and it's actually something that they can work with. It is more for the, not the wet west side, as we call ourselves over here. The legislation does direct Department of State lands to work with the Army Corps of Engineers because we have essential salmon habitat streams on the wet west side, so there's a few more hoops that you have to go through, but it streamlines, rather than having an Army Corps four oh four permit as well as a DSL permit, it forces DSL and Army Corps to work together to streamline one permit so that we don't have to go out and get all of these environmental, hire these environmental folks to do the research that's necessary, and they'll be able to get their ditches clean in a manner that's cost-effective and more everyone is ready actually.
I actually got fined for that, moving ninety yards and the law was fifty.
Wow. Well, now you can move three thousand, but only in drag ditches. So we also are looking at, we were successful in getting one point six million dollars for the Port of Orford redevelopment project, and four hundred and fifty-two thousand for the rogue sediment study that's necessary with the agri to build up that's occurred and affects the salmon heads, as well as the fishing, and really, it's because of the dams that are up the river, and there's no real gravel to hide the dam for spawning gravel that's necessary. So overall, almost six million dollars, which isn't bad for someone on a super minority, but I appreciate all of your assistance, that you get to assist in those projects and the resources coming back to our communities. Collectively, it was twenty-three chief sponsored bills passed that I drafted in this legislative session, and that's up from seventeen in my first session in two thousand and seventeen, so.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
My pleasure, thank you.
So, when are these funds going to become available for these various projects? I guess it was Bill fifty fifty, the ominous?
Correct, so the ominous bill is where we're funded. There are some discrepancies, discrepancy, and I'm looking into that right now, because the hospital, the Curry Health Network, I received an email regarding them not possibly being available until two thousand and twenty-one, but the new Mayanian, of course, started in July twenty nineteen, and so I believe those funds should be available right away, and so I'm looking into the discrepancy that has been brought about by the Curry Health Network on that issue. I will also add that the revenue forecast came out today.
Say the slope, it's really good.
The revenue forecast came out today with a projected additional two hundred million dollars in additional revenue, which of course, the kicker, if you will, was already triggered. For those that don't know about the kicker, it was constitutionally voted in by the citizens many years ago, and if we generate more revenue coming in, two percent over what is projected... And if we generate more revenue coming in, two percent over what is projected, then of course, the additional revenue is then rebated back to the citizens, and they don't get a check, but comes off their tax bill at the end of the year. That collectively is a one point six billion dollar kicker for Oregon. And not to put the partisan hat on, but the majority party raised four point five billion dollars per biennium in taxes this last legislative session. And so, I and many others feel that with a one point six billion dollar surplus, obviously Oregon and their industries and businesses and people are paying, humming along, and the people are paying into the system, and so maybe we don't need that much resources. And increasing those tax dollars, we should be utilizing what we have of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate him, and I want to offer the public again, and you mentioned in two thousand seventeen, you had seventeen chief sponsored bills.
Record for refreshing the record.
Yes, and twenty-three disco round. And these are not just bills for the sake of passing legislation. These are bills that are incredibly important to all of Oregon, rural Oregon, and especially your district in Dakka, and especially in Curry County. That sediment study, the, I mean, that is, we've already talked about lobbying you just a little bit, see the way it's, in fact, it also kind of the Port of Brookings Harbor, and I think you're doing some work on that. The hospital, the emergency facility here is an employee, projections are between thirteen and forty additional people, properly staffed. So, that brings it back to housing. I could go on and on, but thank you, David Brocksmith, for the tremendous work and the precision that you have with the legislature, the respect you have there, all sides of the political spectrum, the governor's office, and it has had tremendous benefits in this county. And it's great work, and thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and it's a pleasure to work with all of you, our mutual constituents, and appreciate County Council Huddle for his work, as well as his work ahead of him forward on the House Bill twenty-three seventy-seven, which I passed in seventeen, that is for workforce housing. He's blazing new trails there, and so are you, all of you. And it will be a model for the state to utilize in providing incentives for workforce housing for Oregon. And so, again, thank you for your kind words, but you are all doing fantastic work for us, our mutual constituency, constituency, and it's a pleasure for you.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the city of Brookings for hosting us. And I think at this point, we are going to try and do one more meeting down here, provided the weather is going to be good. But we may take one meeting off during the dead of winter down here, just for safety reasons. As long as the city of Brookings will have us, we would like to stay involved in the community here and be able to have a board commissioner meeting down here probably once a quarter. Would be great if you would continue to have us. I thank you all for tolerating us tonight and everything that we do, and I appreciate your time. Weather's not a factor for me, I'll be, this meeting is adjourned. I use your hand.